Agenda Item 9 is consideration of Resolution Number 735 in support of the right of self-determination for the residents of the unincorporated township of Laughlin, Nevada. Assemblyman Hardy called and asked that we put something on and show our support for Laughlin to have the right to choose their destination. And with that being said, I know Mesquite took that step back in 1984, and I think it's been a very positive move. So with that being said, any questions or comments from council? If there aren't any, we'll go ahead and seek a motion. Go ahead, Councilman, with Hillary.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to recommend that the City Council approve Resolution Number 735 in support of the right of self-determination for the residents of the unincorporated township of Laughlin, Nevada.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second call for the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item 10 is consideration of approval of Resolution Number 736 supporting the Clark County School District 2012 special elective tax election. I believe we have some members from Clark County come on forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor Weir, members of the council. I'm Joyce Haldeman, representing the Clark County School District, and thank you for the opportunity we have of being here today. Normally, I'm joined by Jeff Wyler, who is our Chief Financial Officer, and he is right now on his way to Georgia because he has a son graduating from college, and it's probably the only thing that would have taken him away from being here today. So I do have some financial experts in the audience that will help me if you ask hard questions so that we make sure that we give you all the details that are correct. I could like to take you briefly through a program that we have, a presentation that we had that will give you an idea of why we are here before you. And so if you don't mind, I'd like to start by looking backwards in the beginning. I was pleased to come here today because in past, when we've had bond questions on the ballot, we have come to Mesquite to work with the residents here to make sure that they're supportive. And Mesquite has always been one of the best communities for us to work with. In fact, my first introduction to Mayor Weir is when he was working with school district committees and different things. We know that your community cares about education, so we're happy to bring this back. And so the last time we were here was in 1998, when we proposed what we thought was going to be a 10-year program that would be $3.5 billion. That program has stretched out to almost 14 years, and instead of $3.5 billion, it has been $4.9 billion. And with that, you can see that the original number of schools that we were planning to build, 88, ballooned to 101 schools. We added to that 13 replacement schools. We added to that six phase replacement schools. And in addition to that, we increased the number of campuses that received renovation and modernization by 45, an additional 45. By all measures, we feel that it was a wildly successful program. The money that was generated was well-spent, and as a result, we were able to take care of the explosive growth that was felt all over the Clark County, including here in Mesquite. I know that you're aware of the new schools that were built here as a result of the 1998 building program and the high school that was built previous to that from a previous campaign. So now the time has come for us to take a look at going forward. Of the $4.9 billion that was generated, there is now less than $40 million remaining. That shouldn't surprise us because, as we said to you, it was supposed to be a 10-year program, and instead, we were able to stretch it out to 14 years. Ideally, and originally, the district had planned to put a question on the ballot in 2008, and it was going to be a rollover question so that we would extend the existing property tax rate for another 10 years. And if you'll remember what it was like in 2008, 2007, it was the beginning of when things started to turn down. And I think wisely, the district made the decision not to put the question on the ballot. We had some people criticize us for that, thought that we should have asked for the money anyway. I think it would have been a different conversation had we done that because we may have built schools for growth that we anticipated coming that actually did not materialize. So I personally think it was a wise decision that we did put it on the ballot. The money that was being generated from the existing revenues was still there. We were able to stretch it out, as I said, for another four years and build the additional projects, and so we did not. But now we are coming to the point in time that with the revenues really depleted and the need beginning to grow again in a different way than what we have experienced in the past, it's time for us to take a look at a way that we're going to fund that. So what we're looking at in terms of a summary of need, you can see that horrible number down there, the $5.3 billion on the bottom line. That's not what we're asking for, so hold on to your panelists. That's not what we're here for today. But if we were asking for a number that would take care of all the needs that we anticipate over the next 10 years, that's what it would be. We anticipate that need for additional seats in the amount of $216 million is the equivalent of nine elementary schools. In the program that we're proposing, there will only be two schools that will be built. And we do have some places, although the growth has stabilized in most parts of Clark County. In the southwest part of Las Vegas Valley, there are two areas that are still very crowded, and the schools are exceptionally large. The renovation and replacement budget is exponential in this particular program. Every time I've come before you in the past to talk about the school program that we've needed, it always has been with a large majority of the money being planned for new schools and a smaller majority or a smaller percentage for renovation of schools. It's completely flip-flopped this time. The money that we're looking at by and large is for renovation or for supplies or equipment or the kinds of things that we need to make sure that our established schools are able to continue on. So you can see that the renovation replacement budget is by far the biggest amount. Educational equity, $670 million is a big part of it. And one of the things that we did that I think gave the school board trustees the courage to continue on with this because I think they recognize this will be a tough sell when they put this question on the ballot, that we'll be asking for a tax increase, and I think they know it's going to be an uphill battle. But you may have heard some of the press from the Las Vegas Valley when the four former First Ladies banded together and created a school improvement committee, and they financed a preliminary poll to just gauge what's the appetite like in the community for this question. And one of the things they learned really was a takeaway for us about how important it was for us to do it, and that is, well, let me just read you a couple of things from the survey. At the outset, voters in Clark County favor the bond measure that would raise taxes in order to fence full improvement by a 15-point margin. That was 55% in favor and 40% opposed, so that was encouraging to us also. But as we drilled down a little bit, we learned that 71% of the people polled agree that the schools are in need of repair, that 66% believe our schools are overcrowded, that 61% agree that schools have outdated technology. And then, this is the one that's the real showstopper for me, whopping 91% of those polled think that all schools, not just the new ones, should have science lab, gyms, and cafeterias that are equitable to the other schools. So we find ourselves now in a situation where ours have the tale of two cities, and that is that we have a number of schools that we have built over the last 10 years that are new schools, new campuses, that have a lot of bells and whistles and the things that are really important to help our students be competitive in today's age. And then we have a large number of schools that are, were built previous to this, who that are functional and working well but don't have the same equity issues as the others. And then, in addition to that, we also have a large number of schools that are really in this stage where they're beginning to deteriorate. About one-third of our schools are over 30 years old, including 28 schools that are over the age of 50 years. So we truly have some needs that need to be, that we need to take a serious look at. So let me move through this. We've also identified replacement schools. 10 ideally need to be replaced, but in the program that we're bringing to the voters, two would be replaced. We've not identified those yet, but they will be in the Las Vegas Valley. There's a formula that the facilities division uses when we're determining whether it's more cost-effective to continue to repair an existing facility or to tear it down and replace it. And once it meets a certain percentage, then they make a recommendation to replace it. We have 10 of those that are in that position now. Here's a couple of examples of some of the things that are in need of replacement, and most of the things that cause a school to be replaced are things that you can't see, but there are examples throughout the valley of things that are difficult conditions. We have phase replacement schools. There are four of them that we have done. One of them, Boulder City High School, has not been completed. That's part of the scope of work that is planned for the program, if in fact the voters approve of it. And then major modernizations and targeted system renewals. This is a big portion of what needs to be done over the next 10 years that causes that number to balloon up to $5.3 billion. And that is that we anticipate what the life cycle of a system is and when it's supposed to be replaced. I use for example that my husband and I have lived in the same house for 20 years, and I'm saying this, and we have not yet replaced the air conditioner. I just know that any minute, that air conditioner is going to go out, and so we plan for the fact that we'll replace that system. Most of our schools, many of our schools are in the same kinds of situations. So as we go before the voters, the conversation that we had with our trustees is how do we do this? How do we make sure that we have enough money that we can maintain the schools and take care of the needs that our aging population of schools has? So one of the things that would be a no-brainer is to just do a rollover to the existing rate. That's what we would have done had we gone on the ballot in 2008. This chart explains why we are not doing that. If you take a look at the chart, the green bars are the debt services required by the state law for us to have in reserve to help pay for the, is a cushion for the debt that has been incurred. And the rust-colored bars are the principal and interest. And so you can see that the debt service becomes greater than the revenues as we go with time. You see that line right there between 2017 and 2018? At that point, we actually don't have enough money to service the debt. And so to do a rollover bond at this time does not create an additional capacity that we need so that we could do new projects. And in fact, looking at that, the 2017 line, knowing that we actually fall beneath the amount of money needed, will cause some sort of action at that time if the trustees are not proactive, which is one of the reasons that's proven to go ahead and put this on the ballot. This is a chart, actually, I'm going to read to you so I don't mess this one up. This is one of my favorite charts. It's a little bit messy, but you can see that when the 1998 program was established, the district was fortunate enough to have a debt service reserve fund in case property values did not support the existing debt. And again, that's the green bars that you see there. This debt reserve fund is what has allowed CCSD to get by. However, by 2015, and this is the blue line that you can see there, the property tax rate will either need to increase either on its own to support the outstanding debt or CCSD will need to restructure the debt with incurred costs and extend it out to the future. So that's the situation that has caused us to come before the trustees and to make a decision about what we're going to do. So why are we here tonight, and what is it that we're asking for? Instead of looking for a rollover, we're looking for a temporary tax increase. So in 2012, in November, we intend to have a question that will have a capital levy of up to six years, and so it could be shorter than that. We actually hope that it will be. This will be a pay-as-you-go program. It's not going to be a bond program. Those of you who know pay-as-you-go know that it has great advantages because every penny of the money that's collected then can be used on projects that will result in improved situations for our students and more jobs for people who live here, and none of the money goes to interest. The reason we have not done pay-as-you-go in the past is because pay-as-you-go is a slow program. You accumulate the money, and as you accumulate it, then you're able to spend it. When we were going through that explosive growth time, we needed to have a lot of money fast so that we could build the schools, you know, that we were building 12 and 15 schools a year for every, over decade. The length of up to six years will serve as a bridge. We're calling this a bridge program that will take us until we have the future capacity so that we can have a rollover program. This will require us to raise property tax by 21 cents, up to 21 cents, which is part of the reason that we're here today. The six-year bridge program would generate $669 million in capacity. So I just spent a lot of time telling you that we had $5.3 billion worth of need. This is a bridge program that would help us with a small percentage of that, that it would be enough so that we could take care of some of the most dire situations that we're facing. At the end of six years, that rate will go back down to the current rate that we now have, and that is also at the time that the board of trustees would consider whether they were ready to ask the voters to roll that over, that existing rate, over so that they did have a future capital program. This chart here, you can see it's actually in three parts. The top part is the, I told you that we had less than $40 million remaining. That $33.5 million in the first section is the amount that we have. Those projects that are listed there are the projects that we have identified in the current reboot, the capital plan, the capital improvement plan that are going to be performed. And then you see the middle part, the bridge part. That's what we're talking about tonight. It says $663, $664 million. It doesn't equate exactly to the $669 million that we're asking for, but it is that program that we're looking there for today. You can see that we have outlined the things that we're going to do, and so you see the major rehabs at 19 schools, including gym additions, one of which would be at Virgin Valley High School. You see the HVAC systems at seven middle schools, the upgrades, different things. And down at the bottom, the two new elementary schools and two replacement schools, and it comes to the $664 million. The other section down there at the bottom, the $1.1 billion, those are things that we have already identified. I can tell you specifically what schools those projects are associated with that need to be done, but they are outside the scope of this program. And then directly under that, you see where it says total, and then it says additional unfunded need, the $3.4 billion. Those are the life system replacements that we anticipate that we will need that also are not a part of this program. So that's how you get to the $5.3 billion. So here's a list of the things that are going to be funded over the bridge program. You have that in your packet. I'll let you review that. And then it brings us to why we're here tonight. And so we are required to take this program to the Debt Management Commission, and before we can do that, we were notified to, required to notify affected entities about this proposal when you're one of those affected entities. And a key part of this is on the second bullet here on this page, which is that we would like to, we brought to you a proposed resolution. We would like you to approve it. The resolution must state that the affected entity has no intent to levy property taxes, which if combined with the proposed increase, would cause the property tax rate levy to exceed the 366 statutory limit. The Debt Management Commission will meet on June 7, and the Board of School Trustees have a meeting scheduled on June 8 whereby they'll make the official decision to go forward and place this on the ballot. So we have been to a couple of other entities. We have one more left to go after tonight, and I come before you with the proposed resolution asking that you would support it. I need to, before I open it up for questions, I need to mention that it was brought to my attention that you have made some changes to the resolution that are different from the language that we provided for you. And we're okay with most of the changes that you made, but the part where you deleted in the last paragraph, the language that you deleted is actually the very language that the NRS requires that is part of the resolution. So I would ask you to consider to reinsert that, and you can leave the additional language that you added if you would like. Can I answer any questions, please?
I have a quick question for Ms. Kartinas. Where are we at right now on our property tax? What are, what is our level right now?
What is our actual revenues?
No, no, what is the, there's a limit of 3.66. Where are we at on ours?
I don't know. I'm sorry.
We can actually tell that.
I can't hear someone, but this is Pat Zamora. He is from Zion National Bank, and he advises on.
Okay. From the city's final budget for 2012-13, the city is levying a rate of 55.2 cents for themselves. In addition to that, the overlapping governmental entities would include Clark County, the Clark County School District, the State of Nevada, and the Las Vegas Clark County Library District. There's a total of $2.77.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Councilman Gus Davidson.
Could you give us a comparison of how that, do you have a list of other communities? How that number rates compared to some other communities around us?
Yes, I do. It's generally the lowest city rate in the county. The other city that's closest to that is the city of Henderson. They're about $2.89.
I guess that's one thing that, not that I'm not in favor of this, but it's the one thing that really scares, there's two things that really scare me. One of them is, when we get down to the bottom, we look at the unfunded liabilities somewhere down the road. So I don't know, as I see an end to this, it could be going on for a long time. And the other, the other thing is that we haven't taken any property tax increases, and when we take a small tax, or a small increase on almost anything, the community has a really rough time. And I think it has a lot to do with the number of retirees we have that are living on fixed incomes, and we have a high percentage of our population that are retirees, and a lot of them are even part-time homesteaders. So that's what really concerns me. I think the taxpayers obviously deserve an opportunity to say how they feel about it. It's not how we feel about it anyway. All of them, it's going to be how they feel about it.
Mayor, we're mayor's responsibility. Thank you, Joyce Haldeman, again. I couldn't agree with you more. I wanted to point out one thing, though, perhaps it was not clear. This is a six-year program. The large need that we've identified is not something we are asking to fund. This will expire at the end, not later than six years, and it may expire earlier than that, and it will not exceed the amount that we have talked about. And so even though we have identified those needs, when we are ready to approach the voters for permission to meet those needs, again, it will be back with a ballot question. And you got to the point with your discussion about the concern about raising taxes. Should you decide to raise taxes here, you can do it as council. You may do that. You have the opportunity. You don't have to live the ballot. We do. You would have to double your current property taxes, your current rate, in order to use up the cushion that you have. I can't imagine that you're going to do that. The requirement from the statute is simply for you to let the Debt Management Commission know, and I know Councilman Rapsin is a member of that commission, let them know that you do not have an intent to use up that cushion that's available to you. And then, I agree with you wholeheartedly, this is a question that has to be answered by the voters. You're not making the decision today. It is simply part of the gate we have to go through before we can put it on the ballot so they can answer that question.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Rapsin?
Thank you for the presentation. I've got a couple of questions. What jurisdictions have already exceeded their cap, and how does this affect them?
The councilman, no jurisdiction has exceeded their cap, and with the addition of the .21.2 cents, no jurisdiction will. We cannot propose anything to the DMC that would basically exceed the 364 cap.
Okay. Second question. I guess this resolution is, as you clearly stated, is not an approval of this or, I guess, support of this in any respect. It's simply a statement that we do not intend to, we have no intent to raise property taxes to the point where this would not be viable offering for tax increase.
That's exactly right.
Intent being what it is, my concern is that, similar to what Councilman Gus Davidson said, we are very proud in this community, the fact that we haven't used property taxes as a mechanism to fund anything. And I think people appreciate that. We have a lot of people on fixed incomes. We have a lot of people who really can afford it, and it's a meaningful increase, you know, on an assessed value of $200,000, which we have in this town, which is not extrapolative, but it's not uncommon. That's $400, $500, $425 a year, which is a meaningful amount. And some of the businesses, I mean, my biggest concern is like Mesquite Gaming, that has tens of millions of dollars of assessed value, and they just came out of bankruptcy. And this kind of thing is a real, real problem for people who are struggling today, and that includes a lot of us here, not just in our community, but in Clark County in general. So I have a couple, and I have a fundamental concern about taxes in general. So I just, I guess the only saving grace is this is not a blessing of this in any sense of the word. It's not the supporting of a tax increase. It's simply saying the city has no intent to raise taxes at this point.
That is correct, and if I could just add one thing, the calculations that we have done is that for a property owner, I have a home valued at $100,000, the impact is about $75 a year. I'm telling people it's about $6 a month. So if your average home is about $200,000, it'd be about $150 a year, so a little over $10 a month. Having said that, I'm not arguing that this is a big ask, and we're not, we are not going into this, you know, lightheartedly thinking, oh yeah, this is a, however, our situation has gotten to the point that we think we have to ask the question.
Councilman Haven?
Proper Ms. Hunt, with the resolution, the language is there with what's been redlined, what's been proposed and taken out, do we accomplish? Sounds like they don't like what we're proposing.
They're stating that in order to take it to the state, the city has to approve it with what was taken out, which basically is that the council is guaranteeing that you have no intent to raise above the level, which in essence ties your hands if you need it to. So that's, you know, that's what they're asking you to, is that if you do a motion to put it back in, that language has to be put back in, in order for them to take it to the state.
Well, I concur with the previous council members that have spoken. I think the voters need to decide, but I guess we have some challenge here with what they want, what might get.
Go ahead.
The way that works with that intent would be that you have no intent, along with the difference .21.2 cents, to exceed the cap of 364. What that means in terms of an increase for the city of Mesquite would actually be, you do not intend to increase your property tax rate by more than .67 cents. It's not that you do not want to increase it at all. That's just the maximum you would have to increase it along with the .21 cents in order to exceed the 364.
So you're saying we would more than double our property tax assessment in the city of Mesquite before we exceed? Or that would make it right at 366, is that correct?
You have a lot of room.
Well, we're kind of proud of that up here. Any other questions from council? I did have one. How much money from the 1998 bombs has been directed to this area here in Mesquite? I believe J.R. Butler came in before that.
Mayor Weir, I have in front of me that in 2004, the Virgin Valley Elementary School was built. That was $13.2 million. In 2003, Hughes Middle School was built. That's $21.7 million. And then prior to that, 1991, Virgin Valley High School was built. That was $3.9. So a total of $38 million.
I believe the high school itself received another $18 million in bonding?
I don't have it with me, but yes, I know that you've received some additional funding, and I don't have that up here.
And that was to fix their HVAC and put in a science lab, is that?
Oh, maybe I do have it.
Well, I understand.
Yeah. Looks like another $13 million that came in. So yeah, you have, I think that the district has really kept you in mind. I think they have a good relationship with Mesquite, making sure that we're aware of your needs, and know that your trustee looks out for you.
Yes, she does. Councilman Haven?
Maybe your chair of wood, maybe just that now, therefore, the last paragraph, proposed language versus what was stricken for the public's benefit. I don't know if they've seen some of that. You want to read that?
Go ahead.
The language that was stricken?
Wait, and what's proposed, the red line?
I can read that. I'll just go ahead and read that. "The final is now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the city of Mesquite." If added that, the governing body hereby approves, and this is what was added, the submission to the electors of the district, the proposal to levy a special elective tax in the amount of .21.20 per $100 assessed value. What was stricken was a proposal and hereby states that it has no intent to levy property tax, which if combined with the special elective tax, would cause the combined property tax rate for the area containing the entity and the district to exceed the limitation on property taxes set forth in NRS 361.453. Any further questions, comments? Councilman Rapsin? Councilman Rapsin?
Yes, I'm struggling with the intent. I mean, it's, it's, to emphatically state that we have no intent is probably true at the moment, but that intent can change. As you know, with economic conditions and other things, and I, I don't, I'm not entirely comfortable in making a statement that we do not intend in the next six years to do anything with regard to property tax. I mean, I'll be perfectly honest with you, this, this is a very emphatic statement as opposed to a general, yeah, okay, if the voters approve, then, you know, it is what it is and we'll, we support in general the concept. But that's, those are two different animals to me and I can't, I can't quite reconcile the two.
Mayor, may I respond to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman Rapsin, for that. I just want to remind you, if you have the intent to raise property taxes, you still have 67 cents that you could increase before you get to the cap. And so you have a pretty big margin. Also, I want you to know that the county also struggled with this language because they have some, they actually may have some intent that they're looking at for various projects. And so the condition that they imposed upon us that will come before you when you see this language at Debt Management is that the amount would not exceed 121 million a year. And so we don't, we don't expect that it will exceed that amount anyway. However, if the property values all of a sudden shot back up and we started experiencing more income than we thought we would, it has that limina that would not exceed 121 a year, perhaps that gives you a little comfort too. The county did.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Lowly corporate.
That's right. Any further questions from council? Seeing none, we'll seek a motion. Councilman Haven?
I do have.
That's a question?
Well, it's a combination of both, if you will.
All right.
We're not against kids. We're not against education. We don't like taxes. We understand the need. In six years, some of us won't be sitting here. In a couple of years, some of us may not be sitting here. We're by an informer or councilmen and women that may get elected. I guess I struggle to find that, you know, we're stating that we want to send this to the voters. The voters decide they want it, we're in. I think the Debt Management Commission can understand that. I appreciate the language that you guys would like. I guess, does this not accomplish what you need to do to take it to the Debt Management Commission?
I can tell you it's not our language, it's the statute. It's the Nevada by statute requirement that this language is what goes to the Debt Management Commission.
So if we approve this resolution, redline the way it is, not with your recommendation, then what happens?
I don't know. I have to tell you, it would go to the Debt Management Commission and they would have to consider the fact that you sent in something and it wasn't quite what the statute required and make a decision from there.
I didn't see which light came on first. I'll go with Councilman Withhever.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is it absolutely mandatory that we vote on this this evening or can we take it to further deliberation and with a little greater understanding?
Mayor, may I respond?
Sure.
I put in front of you the schedule that we are obligated to follow and the Debt Management Commission must be held on June 7th. And so if you would like to delay it until any time before June 7th and come to a conclusion, that would work. But once we get to June 7th, if we don't meet those deadlines that we have up there, we will not make the requirement for the ballot.
When is our next scheduled appointment?
The 12th. And I apologize if it came to you so late. We actually received the requirement to do this at a very late notice and so we have, we've been visiting lots of entities and comparing before council meetings. I asked you.
Now, I personally would like to have some more time to bang this around because I'm not, I'm not totally comfortable with everything that's presented at the meeting. I don't know how we can get that into a timeframe though, if you have to have it answered by, by probably June 6th. I don't know what the answer is.
Councilman Rapsin, you have a question?
Yeah, just so I'm clear on the process, whether we approve or not approve this resolution, it still goes to the Debt Commission.
That is correct.
So really, this is, this is a statement by a local entity that basically says we are or not. It doesn't change the process and now, so I'm clear on that. Then the Debt Commission, if, if it's not approved for whatever reason by the Debt Commission, it still will go to the ballot now, or is that, that's it then?
The Debt Management Commission has the ability to tell us we cannot put it on the ballot.
Okay. So I just wanted to be clear of the process.
Our legal requirement is to bring it to you. The statute is very clear in asking us to have you pass a resolution and what the language was be.
May I ask a question? I don't know if it's appropriate. All of the other entities that you've visited, as you said, what has been the outcome of those?
We've received approval. We have not yet ended the city of Las Vegas. We did that next week. But we have received approval from the others with the exception of the city of North Las Vegas. They are a by the member council. One member recused herself because she is a middle school assistant principal. She felt that she had a conflict of interest. I think she did too. And then there was a split vote, two people for and two people against. The mayor, Mayor Buck of City of North Las Vegas, requested that the explanation that was sent to Debt Management Commission include the fact that it was a split vote. So they didn't, it was, it failed because of a lack of a majority, so that it had a split vote. She also asked the record to include the reasons those who voted against it included as their reasoning for not voting for it, which is actually an essential part because the Debt Management Commission, as you know, since you're a member of it, has a legal obligation to look at whether or not we are within the tax cap, not personal opinions about whether or not they like the ballot or not, if they thought that we were making good choices on the projects or those kinds of things. But are we legally meeting the requirements of the NRS regarding to the property tax cap? And so it will go, that particular entity will go with that explanation. You'll see it when you're there.
Councilman Lindman, your light was on. Did you have, no. Okay. Councilman Haven?
I have a question for Legal First. My wife sits on the CEO committee. Do I have any conflict other than I might be locked out of the house when I get home?
Now, if you would disclose it and go through, if you're going, if it's going to cause you to make a decision, influence it at all, you just need to disclose that.
I just disclosed it.
If you feel like it's not going to cause you influence, then you're fine.
No. I think we need to take care of this tonight. I'm prepared to make a motion. I would like to reiterate the fact that we do support kids, we do support education, we are proud of our tax rates in Mesquite. We support as a council what the voters stand for. We've agreed in this resolution to let the voters decide. If voters decide to go forward, support the bill, then we support it. So I would move that we approve Resolution Number 736 with the red line recommendations from Legal and staff recommendations.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Call for the vote. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.